Welcome to the Mamaronek School Board Candidates Forum. My name is Cindy Dirks and I'm on the board of the League of Women Voters of Larchmont, Mamaronek. Our mission simply is to empower all voters and defend democracy. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan and neither supports nor poses any of the candidates. The candidate forums we organize provide vital information to the entire voting public. We are a small group of volunteers that accomplishes a great deal. In addition to candidate forums, our other activities include sponsoring local students each year to participate in the New York State League Students Inside Albany program and hosting our annual luncheon. Speakers for which have included New York Attorney General Letitia James and notable environmental experts Michael Revel, Harriet Sugarman, and Rajiv Rajam. We also contribute our local information to the voter Vote 411 Voters Guide and welcome new citizens at Naturalization Court and encourage them to vote. We register voters and keep you all informed via our Facebook page, informational email blasts, and our website, l w v l m dot org. Along with the Westchester County League and other local leagues, we will be co-sponsoring some upcoming primary debates. At this point, we can confirm two debates will be held. The first will be on June 4th at 7:00 PM and will feature the candidates in the Democratic Party Primary for the Westchester County District Attorney. The second will be held on June 10th at 7:00 PM, featuring Democratic candidates running in the primary for the United States Congress District 16. Both events will be held virtually. Also, we'd love for you to become a league member and join our local chapter. Though our name reflects our roots in the women's suffrage movement, we welcome members and volunteers of all genders. No time commitment is too big or small. People of every age are welcome. We have individual memberships and we encourage those with children, toddler to teen, to consider a family membership. You're never too young or too old to appreciate your vote as your constitutional right and your voice and national state in local elections. Speaking of, speaking of local elections, I'd like to give you some information about how to vote for this year's Mamaronek School Board. First, there are five candidates vying for three positions on the board. They are Elizabeth Bradley, Sally Cantwell, Ariana Cohen, Michael Davidson, and Andreen Smith. If you are eligible and registered to vote in general elections, you can vote for the budget and the school board of, school board trustees on Tuesday, May 21st. Otherwise, the last day to register at the district court, at the district clerk's office is May 16th. Voting is in person at your, at your local elementary school. If you want information about the school budget, please go to mamaronekschools.org. Before we begin, I'd like to thank the candidates for appearing this evening. I also want, want to thank LMC Media for their assistance with this forum. And we are especially grateful for our program's host, Mike Witch. Mr. Witch is the Secretary of the LMC Media Board of Directors. He is a retired teacher from the Mamaronek School District. However, he does not live in the district and cannot vote on school district matters. And now I turn the forum over to Mike Witch. Thank you.
Welcome to candidates, incumbent as well as first time candidates to the Board of Education. I'm honored to be moderating this forum. The League of Women Voters has prepared 14 questions that I will ask, rotating the order of who will respond, so the same person won't always be first or last to answer the same question. The league asks that you answer each question in about one and a half minutes. But we'll begin the forum with opening statements. Elizabeth Betsy Bradley will be first, followed alphabetically by Sally Cantwell, Ariana Cohen, Michael Davidson, and Andreen Smith. Betsy, you have about a minute and a half.
Thank you very much, Michael, and thank you to the league for this opportunity. My name's Betsy Bradley. I'm a product of the Mamaronek School System and grateful to have had the opportunity to thrive at Central, Homics, and MHS. In 2015, I returned to the district with my husband Eric, a scientist, and our then four-year-old daughter Phoebe, now a seventh grader at Homics. I couldn't be more grateful for my education in the Mamaronek Schools. I was nurtured by teachers whose influence served me well in college at Harvard and in graduate school at NYU. And I've spent my career thus far in nonprofit administration overseeing educational program strategy at large, large New York area nonprofits, some of which, such as the New York Public Library, have a billion dollars in assets under management. And every point in my career, I've been close to the heart of nonprofit operations, whether managing union and non-union staff, participating in capital project development, engaging with community stakeholders, or developing best practices for good governance. I'm adept in the management of nonprofit budgets, both from this work and from my fiduciary responsibility on several nonprofit boards. And it's led me to see both the significant successes of our district, but also the opportunities that we have yet to take. Many students in our district lack advocates for a variety of socioeconomic reasons. They struggle for access to resources that we've already put into place and for which our taxpayers have already played. This is an urgent issue, as is that of communication. We are failing to deliver timely, relevant, and consistent communication to parents, caregivers, and other stakeholders. And I also believe that our teachers and administrators need sustained access to high-quality, accurate teaching resources and professional learning opportunities. These are just a few of the tenants of my platform. And my career's taught me that responsible stewardship can go hand in hand with innovation and advancement. I bring a fresh perspective on some time-honored problems, and I hope you'll consider my candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Cantwell, opening statement, please.
Sorry, I just want to unmute it. Good evening. My name is Sally Cantwell. Firstly, thank you to LMC Media and to the League of Women Voters for hosting this particular forum. Currently, I am serving as the secretary for the school board and in my first three-year term on the school board. And I am enthusiastically seeking reelection for another three years. These past three years have provided profound insight into the intricacy dynamics of our public education, particularly in addressing the academic and mental well-being of our students and supporting our dedicated administrators, educators amid the evolving educational landscape. The introduction of our new leadership, including Superintendent Dr. Sampson and Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Moore underscores the significance of continuity and institutional knowledge. I have, I have a deep, I have deep roots of the Mamaronek School District spanning for the last 24 years. All of my four children have touched the Mamaronek School District. Might touch the Mamaronek School District. Beyond my duties, I've been actively involved engaging with various community roles, serving as various presidents, such as the PT Council for, for Mamaronek Schools, the PTA for Homics, the Winwood School, and the Mamaronek Schools Foundation, and play a leadership role in the, um, community leadership role in the Larchmont, Mamaronek Hunger Task Force. Looking ahead, I am committed to continuing on our past accomplishments by focusing on policy refinement, advocacy for our students' well-being and well, and belonging, and providing unwavering support to our educators. I'd like to again thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you. And now Ariana Cohen, your opening statement, please.
Hi, I'm Ariana Cohen. I am, first of all, I think LMC and League of Women's Voters for giving us this opportunity. I am running for a third term, something I did not think I would say running after running for my first, but I'm excited to be back because I'm really excited about where our district is headed. But first, a little bit about me. We moved to Mamaronek 11 years ago. I have three kids in the schools, one at Murray, one at Homics, one at the high school. So personally, we're very vested in the district. And then professionally, I came to this work having spent my career working in schools as a social worker, a dean, and then an administrator. And have spent the last six years really digging in and taking this job incredibly seriously, getting to know the incredible people that work in our district, the incredible people that live in our district. And I feel hopeful and excited about our new superintendent and his new assistant superintendent and really want to stay on to further all the things that we've begun as it relates to curriculum, as it relates to our belonging work, as it relates to looking at opportunities for fields and all of the things that really improve the quality of life for our students here in our district, which has always been my North Star.
Thank you. Michael Davidson, please, your statement.
Thank you. So first of all, thanks to the League of Women Voters and LMC Media for putting the event together. And thanks to all the candidates for participating in this forum. My name is Michael Davidson and I've lived in the community for about 15 years. I have two children who both went through Chatsworth, Homics, and currently attend the high school. I retired last year from a 26-year career on Wall Street, where I ran a number of different business units and also spent four years as treasurer for the bank's U.S. operations. After some time away from work, I started my own business earlier this year, focused on financial-related consulting and private investments. I'm the proud son of an elementary school teacher and education is a topic I care about deeply. I've also been very involved in youth sports in the community, coaching my kids in pretty much every sport since they were little. It's my love of Mamaronek and Larchmont, my experience working with kids in youth sports, and my deeply rooted commitment to public school education that led me to run for the Board of Education. With the arrival of Dr. Sampson, this is an incredibly exciting time for our district. And I know we all yearly await the outcome of the strategic framework process Dr. Moore described a few weeks ago. I'm certain that they will come up with new ideas, initiatives, and approaches that will start to transform our district for the better. But we're also dealing with a significant financial constraint. Our district spends less per student than any other district in Westchester, Rockland, or Putnam County, to staggering statistics. Not only that, but our enrollment is stabilized at record-high levels and the needs of our student body are at unprecedented levels. The administration has done a fantastic job maintaining the excellence of our schools despite these financial constraints, but we need to do more. We need to become even more efficient in how we manage our finances so we can free up funding for new investments. I have over 25 years of experience dealing with these kinds of issues, these kinds of financial constraints. I know how to manage expenses and cut costs as a way to free up investment dollars for new programs and initiatives. I think the current board has done an outstanding job and has filled with talented individuals with deep experience in a number of professions and with a tremendous knowledge of our schools. I think I could complement their expertise and bring my finance experience to the table, supporting the administration and making the board even more effective. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Andreen Smith, would you give us your opening statement, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mike, and thank you so much to LMC Media and the League of Women Voters. My name is Andreen Smith, and I have served three years on the school board because I genuinely believe that public education is really connected to the vitality of, of our community. I was born and raised in Jamaica in a small town, and the values that they instilled in us growing up were family, community, and education. And I moved to Mamaronek in 2016 with my son because I found those same values here. I graduated from Truman High School in the Bronx at the top of my class and was privileged enough to play sports all four years at high school. I received my bachelor's degree from Stanford University, my master's in business from Schiller International University in Paris, and my law degree from Georgetown. I worked as a litigator and lobbyist for a top law firm in DC before transitioning to a government affairs role for a prudential insurance company. Currently, I am managing counsel for a multinational bank, where I also serve as the head of U.S. Legal for Environmental, Social, and Governance Issues, as well as political law compliance. For the last three years, I've served on the school board. And I'm proud to say I was the first Black person elected to that role and was privileged enough to serve on the curriculum, communication, policy and law, audit, and UPK community committees, because I felt those were crucial to the success of our district. In that time, we've been able to hire multiple assistant superintendents and leaders, school leaders, new school leaders. We have also hired Dr. Sampson, our new superintendent. And I'm very pleased to see that we are now having a newfound focus on data-driven decision-making and systems planning. I think that's aligned with the priorities that I'm going to be focused on, which are transparency, opportunities, and partnerships moving forward. And I would like to have your vote on May 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now to the questions. As I said, the league has prepared 14 questions. The first one goes to first answer person will be Betsy. And it's about civics. And it's a long question. And if you'd like, when it's your turn to answer, I'll repeat all or some of the question. So, Betsy, many districts in our state offer students the opportunity to earn a seal of civic readiness on their high school diploma. It signifies that the student has attained proficiency in civic knowledge, skills, mindset, and experiences. Is Mamaronek providing enough civics education at all levels to prepare students to be knowledgeable voting citizens? If not, what should we be doing?
Thank you, Mike. This is a question that is dear to my heart. As an educator and as a historian, I do believe that civics is today ever more crucial and that it is a key component of teaching critical thinking in our schools. I believe that in the recent decades, we have failed students when it comes to civics. They no longer understand participatory democracy as perhaps all of us on this Zoom do understand it or were taught it, and that there are numerous opportunities that exist, both at Mamaronek and elsewhere, to really shore up this understanding from kindergarten through 12th grade. I believe that opportunities that Mamaronek has already taken advantage of, such as the development of OKRA under Mr. Liberty's leadership, provide insights into how we can roll out a more comprehensive civics opportunity, civics opportunities across our, our K-12 landscape. And I know we've also taken great advantage of programs such as the Tang Academy with New York Historical Society. So I believe that we're primed and that our district's leadership is ready for this kind of engagement. I know that it's very much on our new superintendent and new curriculum assistant superintendent's radar. But I think we should look to the strengths we've already developed with programs such as OKRA and, and see how we can use those existing tools to roll out a more profound and sustained curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Cantwell, could you answer that same question, please? Is Mamaronek providing enough civics education?
Um, I think the, the, the long answer is I think it is providing civic education through our OKRA program. The concern that I would have and have voiced is that it is a four-year program as opposed to, and starts in freshman year. My concern is that for students, four years, you have, my concern is that they have to know and think about this world very early in their, in their high school times. And I would almost sort of love to see an, an opportunity to open that again for a two-year program starting either, you know, sophomore year or junior year. So the students, once they start to really understand who they are in high school, can really get involved in the world of civics. But obviously, this is something that is important and, and there's a conversation already underway with this current superintendent to see how do we, how do we shore that up and how do we make sure that our students leave being, you know, good fellow citizens to their, to their colleagues and their other, you know, their colleagues.
Thank you. Ariana, can you answer the question about civics, please?
Yeah, so, I, as it's been said, we do have the course Original Civic Research in action. However, I do feel that we've got room to grow here. I think our new superintendent has actually spoken about that seal specifically and sort of the opportunity it would provide if we began to offer it. And I know that's a conversation he and Dr. Moore are already having. And I think that really speaks to the exciting time we're entering, which is we have a leadership team that is seeing our strengths and seeing where we can build on them. And I think OKRA is an incredible program for the kids who are taking it. And there is a real opportunity to look at civics being something that all children at some point have access to. And we, just last week at our board meeting, began to have those conversations about sort of what, what do we wish all students could have their freshman year or their sophomore year? And I think civics is absolutely one of those things that we want every child to have some based on understanding too, and then for those who want to, to pursue, pursue more deeply.
Thank you. Michael, civics education.
So I think the answer undoubtedly is that there's more that we can do. I echo the sentiments about the OKRA program. It's, it's outstanding, but it's, it's an incredibly deep dive into the topic. It's a four-year commitment, as others have said. And it's, uh, it's, it's very much focused on the students who are willing to make that commitment at the expense of, of, of other electives. And so I think civics is an incredibly important topic for our students. And I think there's a broadening of that, a deepening of that, and an extension of that beyond what's offered through the, the very specialized OKRA program that would benefit all of our children.
Thank you. Andreen, civics education.
Thanks, Mike. One of the issues that is at the forefront of my platform is how we can empower futures and open doors for students across our district. So I think this is one prime example where we could lean in. I think we're doing terrific work with OKRA. I think we're doing terrific work with students who are going to New Hampshire to participate in democracy. I think I've been interviewed so many times by different students across the district who are looking for leaders in the community, trying to figure out what their positions are on different issues. And I feel their sense of passion. And I think there are always opportunities to lean in and to do more. And I'm very excited to see what Dr. Sampson and Dr. Moore are going to be doing. One of the, the things that they focus on is trying to plan and understand what are the needs, understand what resources are needed to be connected to that so that we can have success when we roll out different initiatives. And I'd love to actually see this connected more deeply to the strategic framework that's being developed. Part of our mission is that we're helping to prepare responsible citizens to participate in a multicultural world. I think this is definitely a part of that conversation and we need to, to consider that moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Sally Cantwell, I'm going to ask you the second question first. This is about the environment. Legislation has been proposed, written with input from students, that would require age-appropriate instruction and learning expectations for climate education for all public elementary and secondary schools with a goal of addressing the climate emergency. What, if anything, should the district do to meet the concerns of students on this topic?
The environment is very clearly very important to all of us. You know, we have a very limited time on this earth of which we need to make sure that we are the keepers and, and we protect our environment. As in, you know, when you talk about programs that are being rolled out to us versus the students, I'm not quite sure what, what the question is, but I think that there is probably more that can be addressed on how to engage the students in the environment. We do it at a very high level at the moment, and it's very basic currently, you know, sort of recycling world. Or, you know, we do have an environment, environmental AP, which covers a lot of topics. And that's tremendous if you are involved in that. And it's not an easy AP. It's, it's much, it's very hard and covers a broad base. But there are certainly more that we can collaborate and understand from the students, what they are looking to, you know, what they would like to achieve, because this is their next future. And it, you know, we would encourage them to come to the table and to have further discussions with us.
Thank you. Ariana, would you take that question next, please? Environment.
So I think the environment is a perfect example of something we've done, parent-driven. And we're very fortunate that we have parents that have really driven this so far through volunteer efforts, through different recycling efforts and different, and gardening and different things in all of our schools. I think one of the things that drew our current board to our new superintendent is things like environment, where we have sort of pockets of greatness. We would like to systematize so that when that parent moves on, that the, the, the thing that they have built lives on. And I think the environment is sort of speaks perfectly to that reality, that really we should be looking at what we're, what we're already doing. Because I think there is a lot of great work happening in pockets throughout all six schools. And as we talk about sort of this plan, the strategic plan, understanding how we're investing as a system led by our systems leaders and then maybe supported by our parents and by our students and using those voices and elevating those voices to really do this consistently and meaningfully, I think is the goal for moving forward. Because I think, I agree, we all deeply believe in this work. It's sort of how do we commit to it as a system?
Thank you. Michael, the environment question.
Yeah, can you just repeat? I want, I didn't catch the beginning.
What, if anything, should the district do to meet the concerns of students on this topic of the environment?
Got it. So I, I think the, the key is to take the, the strides that have been made to date and as Ariana said, figure out how we can institutionalize them. And I think it's also enriching the, the elective opportunities that children have to potentially, to, to spend more time on this topic than is in the main curriculum and also into the extracurricular activities. So we have a, we're blessed with a community with tremendous resources. And I think the steps that we can take to broaden the opportunity for students to make the elective to, if this isn't a, a field they want to spend more time on, giving them the choice to do so, leveraging the resources of the community is the opportunity in front of us.
Thank you. Andreen, do you want me to repeat the questions?
No, that's okay. I think this is an excellent question. And I think this is a prime example where when we are looking at our curriculum, we need to lean into this area. There are states like California that actually have mandated teaching around climate change. So I think that's something that we can definitely consider. And, and there are many models out there that we can take a look at. Our students are already doing some of this work. They've met with the board to talk about our recycling efforts and things that we need to continue to do more of. And I know, as Ariana mentioned, our parents are also leading the charge here. But I think we can do more in terms of teaching the science around this. How are we contributing to climate change? And I think in our own backyard, this is something that is deeply meaningful and personal. Flooding is a key concern across the three municipalities, especially in the village of Mamaronek. And I think this is one area where we can dive into thinking about climate justice. What does it mean when certain communities that are disadvantaged are more at risk of certain climate change dangers? That's something that we can definitely consider and weaving it throughout our science curriculum so that students understand how do humans contribute to this? What steps can we take to reduce that, that risk? It's something that's near and dear to my heart because I, I do that in my day-to-day job as the head of Legal for Environmental, Social, and Governance Issues at the bank. So I'd love to, to dive deep into this and have further conversations with the board and with the administration about opportunities for curriculum enhancement.
Okay. Betsy, your turn. Question about what, if anything, the district should do to meet the concerns of students on the topic of the environment?
Well, I, I think there, there is, this is a multi-pronged question with a multi-pronged answer. And from my perspective, I see that our Director of Humanities and her colleagues are working very hard to create curricula that integrate the sciences and, and climate change into ELA instruction and social studies instruction so that our students, even in elementary school, come to understand that they're living in an interconnected world where social studies and the history that they learn was impacted by climate change. And, and similarly, that English Language Arts have a great deal to tell us about the environment. So I, I see that that work is absolutely happening throughout our education, perhaps more than our stakeholders and caregivers know. And I also see that this is an opportunity for better communication, certainly around climate emergencies. I think that caregivers would really appreciate knowing that the district has an organized and, and well-conceived plan for managing climate emergencies. We saw last September that there was a bit of chaos when we did have a climate emergency. And also that initiatives such as Green Tigers, which are so popular and so well-thought-out in the elementary schools, really have a chance to flourish elsewhere. It, it sometimes seems like there isn't follow-through. There may be, but it isn't being communicated to our stakeholders.
Thank you. And by the way, thank you all for keeping within the time limit that the league has set for these answers. The third question has to do with school capacity, and I'm going to ask Ariana to answer first. The question is, are any of our schools at or near capacity? And if so, what planning should the district be doing?
So we reported out, we continue to report out on this biannually, typically the first board meeting and towards the end of each year. And what we have shared is that all of our elementary schools are at physical capacity. Now, what that means is things have, the landscape has changed. We have higher needs, which require us to use more classrooms. So for example, if you had 24 students to one teacher, that takes up less classroom space than if you now have higher needs for 12 to one ratio or a 10 to one ratio. So what we've learned post-COVID, post-COVID and at large is our needs have expanded immeasurably and are, all of our buildings are at capacity at the elementary level. At Homics, we do have some available classrooms, and at the high school, we do as well. We're looking at how we utilize those. We do have the largest current number at our high school in history. So the other thing that we are looking at is how we deploy and utilize our resources to support the large numbers we're seeing at the high school and make sure that they have what they need, similarly at the Homics. So in terms of how, what do we do? I think we, we watch and we figure out how we continue to do the best job we can with whatever students we have in front of us. And I think it really will speak to continuing to be innovative about how we utilize the spaces we have, which is why. I think it really will speak to continuing to be innovative about how we utilize the spaces spaces we have, which is why um for those of you who watched last week and will be following up further. Um, we just, uh, Dr. Sampson asked for us to do a schedule, ha- hire a scheduling consultant to really understand how we're using the spaces we have and how we can better be using the both the spaces and our human capital, which are the most important piece in schools, our teachers. To best support um the growing numbers of students that we have in front of us.
Okay, thank you. Michael? Capacity. You're muted, Mike.
I think Dr. Sampson spoke about it at length when he presented the budget and and echoing Ariana's points that the elementary schools are effectively out of space. Uh, even though uh enrollment has declined a little bit, the needs of students for smaller spaces is at unprecedented levels and therefore um there's really not 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 an extra classroom to be had in our elementary schools. I think uh as Ariana pointed out, the uh there are some extra classrooms in the middle school and in the high school, but uh anybody who's been in the middle school uh will attest as to how crowded the hallways are. Um, and how difficult it is given the the surge in enrollment and the high school is is um at at an all-time high, although it does seem to 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 be able to fit it a little bit better. But the only reason why we've been able to survive with this surge is because we've raised class sizes. Uh, we've raised them in pretty much all of the elementary schools and in the high school, uh there are classes with thirty-plus kids in them. So uh I think it's a very significant issue that's going to require tremendous creative thinking on behalf of the board and the administration uh to deal with, especially given the uh constraints of operating in a a a town like a large one in Amerinek where where land is at a at such a premium. So I think it's a very serious issue that uh will require very um intense time and focus from the administration and the board in the years to come.
Thank you. Um, Andrean, can you answer that question, please, on capacity?
Yes, this question is top of mind for many families across the district and I I think I'm aligned with what a lot of people are are saying so far. Um, Dr. Sampson has reported that there's stable enrollment but that there are increasing needs at certain levels based on the social emotional needs uh or di- different learning needs of students. So I think what I would point to here is the need to focus on partnerships. I think it's important not just to just not just to wait and see, but to plan and to figure out what can we expect coming around the corner. What does enrollment look like five years down the road? What does it look like ten years down the road? We did a study, I believe, in twenty-eleven. Um, and I served on the district enrollment task force when we had that crisis of enrollment a few years ago, which moderated ultimately. I think we need to get ahead of it. I think we need to be in conversations with our municipal partners. I think we need to be thinking through space specifically. We, I'm looking forward to seeing the final results of the the scheduling analysis that's being done with our third-party consultants. What we learned at the last board meeting is that um for example, some of our classrooms at the high school are only being used for five periods out of the day. So for three class periods, they're empty. So what we're looking for are some final recommendations about how we can be creative and innovative and how we schedule classes. Um, how we shift things around so that we alleviate the space constraints, both in terms of the the room capacity and in in terms of how students move across the building. I think that's going to be key. We need to lean into conversations with our teachers or students or families about what their needs are and what they're looking for moving forward.
Thank you. Uh, Betsy Bradley, your turn on capacity. Planning for it.
Um, yes, as the product of Central, which opened in the nineteen seventies and people wondered why we needed it. Um, it's kind of funny to see how far we've come. I too am really excited, um, as Andrean and others have mentioned, to learn about the results of our um of our scheduling study. I I was I found it very enlightening to hear from Dr. Sampson and others. You know, the ways in which space utilization had been negotiated by the previous administration and the way in which some perhaps um patterns have been taken for granted that we we actually don't need to adhere to and that we might rethink that would both lead to increased opportunities for space utilization, but also to kind of a greater sense of social and emotional um support for our students so that they're not all in the hallways at the same time, for example. I'm also really interested to learn more about uh the ways in which our high school enrollment has increased while our other schools have remained flat. I do think we have district partners such as the Community Resource Center who could help us better understand that incoming demographic and create opportunities to support them um, you know, in in all of the spaces that we have.
Thank you. Uh, and Sally Cantwell, would you take that same question about?
Of course, I think I think most of people have actually uh said most, you know, majority of things, as we said, all the elementary schools are at capacity. Um, we have a small amount of room at Homics and then clearly at the high school. Um, however, uh what goes in capacity is how do we make sure that students are in the right environment for learning? So what we've decided to do or we have put forward on the bond for this year is to increase the size of the cafeteria in order that we can actually fit a whole grade into into the cafeteria. Um, I sit on the building committee and I, you know, we are always constantly looking about, looking at how do we how do we use our space? How do we increase our buildings when it comes to it? I think at some point in time there will be need to, you know, going back on the uh conversation about Homics, we're going to have to look at that and say is it big enough for, you know, the the students incoming in order to make sure that the students are in the right learning environment for for themselves? We could also create some outdoor classrooms with a view to, you know, giving some extra space that that the students can, you know, can work in. And um and then I think finally, you know, the the scheduled consultants, it's great that they're doing it at the secondary level. But once they've completed that, it would be interesting to see how they would take that to the elementary level and see how they can expand and then see what miracles that they can weigh for us.
Thank you. The next question has to do with the budget. Uh, and I'd like uh Michael Davidson, if you respond first, what is your opinion on the proposed budget?
Uh, my opinion is, first of all, I think it's important to note and the community should be aware the budget's big and complicated. I think that's a, that's, that's a fu- uh fundamental fact of the 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 world we live in. It's a hundred and sixty million dollars. It's got a thousand different light items. Uh, and it's governed by a very complex uh set of set of regulations. So um, that's my first thought on the budget is it's big and it's complicated. Uh, the second thing is I think uh Dr. Sampson, the administration has done an excellent job preparing this year's budget. I mean, Dr. Sampson showed up uh late last year. Um, the strategic framework work is really just starting. And I think his approach to this budget, which is basically, you know, keep the ship afloat, keep moving in the direction we've been moving. Uh, not a, not a huge uh strategic shift at this stage uh is absolutely the right approach and I wholeheartedly uh support uh and and hope the community will support this budget. Um, I think the complications with the budget are going to come in the future. And as I mentioned in my opening statement, it's going to be how do we uh find the money in future year budgets to support all the things. I mean, we've already spoken about environment and civics and all these things we want to add. Well, um, there's a finite amount of money and I think it just gets more and more complicated from here as we start trying to uh really uh bring to life the results of this strategic framework. And so um supportive of this year's budget, but I think there's a lot of work in the years to come.
Thank you. Andrean, would you answer that question about the proposed budget, please?
I I think I bring my legal and my financial background in terms of providing oversight for the budget. I think Dr. Sampson did a terrific job and I wholehearted, wholeheartedly support the budget. I think what we've been focusing on over the past few years is how we find efficiencies, how we look at sharing resources across different districts or programs or with BOCs, for example, to um increase our savings and how much we spend on benefits. You'd be surprised how much of the budget is allocated towards salaries and benefits, the whole overwhelming majority of it. Um, so I think he's done a great job in terms of identifying the different needs of the district, adding carefully at staff needs at the high school, which is where we felt that they were the most pressing concerns this year. And also I think what I'm looking forward to is a strategic framework that's a mapped to our budget. So that in future years, as we are looking at how we support our sports, how we support pace, how we support so many of these community priorities that are very important here 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 in Amerinek, we're focusing on transparency. So we're involving the community so that they understand how their money is being spent because we are most importantly stewards of the district's resources and how we are opening doors through opportunities for students and partnering with communities to continue to realize savings for our district. I I do want to mention that we're in an environment where affordability is a primary concern for a lot of families. So I think we have to continue to be diligent to make sure we're balancing the needs of our students with being um important stewards.
Thank you. Uh, Betsy Bradley, your opinion on the proposed budget, please?
Coming to the this budget as a parent and a a taxpayer rather than as a member of the current board and and I have to agree, I I think that um it reflects some very judicious stewardship and certainly Dr. Sampson's experience in Freehold and elsewhere. He understands what it means to to get your arms around a complicated district uh with many moving parts. And I do think he's to be congratulated. I also think that the the annual budget is an opportunity for the district to really be clear in its communications to the community, to the taxpayers, what it is that they're paying for. Um, you know, it always comes as a surprise to me to be reminded that so much of what we're paying for is full-time employees. I think it's uh, it's not something that is um is a kind of uh innate to the understanding of of every parent and stakeholder in the district. And it behooves the board as well as um as the administration to spend a little more time really unpacking the budget for for those who are not familiar with nonprofit budgets and who may be looking for more explanation. We're lucky to live in a community where we rarely have to adopt a contingency budget, but I don't think that is something we should take for granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ariana? I'm sorry, Sally Calquell, your turn on the, your opinion of the proposed budget, please?
Um, I think again, as everyone said, I think Dr. Sampson and uh and uh Dr. Wallack has done a tremendous job of reviewing the budget, you know, um proposals for this coming year. It was very encouraging in the board meetings for them to to go through all the high-level um expense categories, which I think is where most people go to straight away when they actually get the budget book. Um, you know, we are in a difficult position where eight, we can really just to te- um deal with twenty percent of the total budget because the remainder of it is salaries and benefits, as people have mentioned previously. Um, nonprofit, um, you know, when you come to the the budgets of a public, you know, education, it's very different from a corporate budget. And, you know, over in the past times, we've had community involvement where we've invited them to come in and understand line by line and you know, we had spent significant time with the previous superintendent and local community members making sure that they understand what was, you know, how it's put together and what's in there. I think the one thing that it would, you know, I would like to see are the some of the efficiencies of our budget in the sense of you know, how many cl- you know, how many students are doing certain um programs? What are those programs? Giving our students and is that really the right way that we should be spending our money? So I think as Dr. Sampson said, you know, he's, he's been here for, you know, a hot minute. And I think next year, you know, it's going to be interesting to see how he reshapes that in order to match what, you know, his his priorities and his strategic goal.
Thank you. And now Ariana, it's your turn on the budget.
Really, a- a- all good things have been said. I I wholeheartedly support the budget. Um as we also spoke about at our last meeting, um, not doing so puts us um in a potentially really challenging position as then you operate from a contingency budget, which in future years means that when we try and go above the when we try and stay under the two percent cap, we're operating at the deficit from the year before. So um, but that is not to say that I don't also support it because I wholeheartedly stand behind the budget itself. I think what I most appreciate in spite of the fact that Dr. Sampson arrived in November, which is sort of kind of well into budget season, based on the way the cycle works. Um, his go-slow approach and his deliberateness to sort of say, I want to understand the landscape before I start adding has made a tremendous amount of sense and I think has been welcomed by this board. Um, I think the other um important thing that's been said is that moving forward, we are also looking at things like when we do scheduling at the high school and when we do scheduling at the middle school, so that when we look to add program and we look to figure out where there are budget needs, that we're going to do s- that we're going to do so with the information of what the asks are. Historically, a lot of that has taken place in the summer, post-budget season. So even just the idea of rolling that back, so we're responding to need and student voice, I think um will be really important as we look to future budgets.
Okay, thank you. The next question has to do with academics. Uh, first to answer will be um Andrean, please. And the question is, what do you see as the biggest academic challenge faced by each level individually? Elementary, middle and high school?
That's interesting. Okay, so I think I'm I'm trying to think of which level to start with first. I think we have a lot of opportunities for improvement for our curriculum. So I I would say that generally, for the last three years I have served on the curriculum committee um as part of the board because I felt that it was critical for us to pay attention to the the learning needs of our students. Um, you might be aware that there are opportunity gaps that we see in how different students perform. For example, students who are students of color, thirty-six percent of students of color are not reading at benchmark level, for example. And when you compare that to the general population, that's really twenty-six percent. And when you look at special education student, that's also high. And students in poverty, that's also very high, I think, almost close to fifty percent. So I think we need to take a close look at how we are teaching our students and making sure that we have a consistent curriculum that has a through line from kindergarten all the way through the high school. So focusing, for example, on elementary, I think we need to focus explicitly on literacy and how we're teaching it. I think we can move away from balanced lit- literacy and voluminous reading and have more targeted instruction around phonics so that our students can perform and so that we are all helping to close those gaps. I think at Homics, we need to focus very closely on writing and making sure that we have a specific and explicit curriculum that ties in not just the mechanics of writing, but ties it across multiple subjects. So connecting social studies to ELA, for example, so that students can see the connections across the board, across multiple subject levels. And then at the high school, I think we need to really focus on um providing more enrichment opportunities, advanced programming for students and looking to close gaps in terms of the enrollment there so that we're not seeing the gaps in terms of the types of students that are enrolling in these in these programs. Um, I think overall, we have a strong district and there, these are just opportunities for improvement that I see that we can make sure we're examining where they may be closed doors or barriers and removing them. And we can bring students across the district together in focusing on academic excellence.
Thank you. Uh, Betsy, can you answer that question on academics? The challenge faced by each level, elementary, middle and high school?
Yes, I I would echo Andrean that I do think there is a lack of consistency in elementary education in terms of the instruction from teacher to teacher. I've certainly met with many parents who have said that their experiences were not the same as um as those of of colleagues or friends in other classrooms. And it seems to me to be a missed opportunity to make connections so that every student exiting fifth grade is coming with the same set of skills and is um is has reaching approximately the same level according to their abilities. I do think that that's a missed opportunity. I, at the uh Homics level, I am hearing from a lot of parents who feel that there are um there are gaps in communication that have led to their students feeling a bit lost in that system. Partly, this has to do with much less uh hands-on communication between um teachers and parents. And so there is little understanding about why you know, for example, textbooks are being eliminated um or certain projects are being privileged over others. I do think there are opportunities to streamline those resources so that um caregivers all know exactly what to expect. And finally, at the high school level, um I would echo the need for more electives, more opportunity to um to create access to to our wonderful offerings across the board because they are so much more often taken advantage of by students who already have outside resources and perhaps less need, for example, the PACE program in order to introduce them to performing arts. And so those would be my my three. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's a noise in the background? Now I don't hear it.
My cat.
Oh, wants attention. Could you answer that on academics?
Yes, of course. Um, academics all come down to the the um comes down to our curriculum. And I think one of the things that we are fortunate about is that we can enforce. You know, we have a, we have a new um superintendent for um curriculum uh curriculum. So I think he now has the opportunity to look at all our curriculum and to to see where it needs to be enhanced and where it needs to be improved. Um, and you know, focusing particularly on um early phonics and literacy and STEM education. Um, if I look at the different um areas of different schools, I think you know, elementary schools, it, you know, it's going back to basics and making sure that the children, by the time they get to you know, Homics, they they, you know, or as they go through their their middle, their elementary education, that they understand the basics. So when they arrive at Homics So when they arrive at homics and they're challenged a bit more, they then know exactly, you know, what they're missing. I think the introduction of AI into the homics framework will be very interesting so that teachers can provide students with students with direct feedback. I think the other thing that is concerning is getting students to know what paths, what pathways there are. You know, what do I need to do in in homics versus then, you know, how will that affect me once I get to the high school? And I think the high school is ensuring that everybody has a place there, that, you know, we have phenomenal teaching there, but I'm concerned that we don't necessarily have, you know, some more vocational education so that we can make sure that everybody feels that they have a place where they can learn to what they're interested in interested in.
Thank you. The same question on academics, please answer Ariana, your turn.
So this is has always been my area of passion. I think it's sort of our opportunity, it's obviously our bread and butter, we're a school district, but it's also the opportunity for us to give all of our students access. So I'd say at the elementary level, I think the important conversation that we really drilled down on it as the previous board with our previous administration was literacy, reading, writing, the science of reading, understanding program, understanding that we have amazing teachers, but that consistency matters and that equal access matters so that every child we know has the same lived experience. I think at the middle school, the conversation evolves into both how you then build on that literacy and really build on those writing skills. And then also our math track, which is limited in nature and also needs to be really closely looked at and understood because if you don't sort of track onto that honors, there's it's very hard to get back on. So again, this idea of sort of how do we build those foundational skills? And then how do we build more pathways and opportunity that are specific to our students' needs? I also think both at middle and at high school, the conversation needs to be had about how do we find academic curricular opportunities that follow the interests of our students, whether that's headed towards careers, whether that's headed towards college? How do we dive deeper and provide access consistently with on-ramps at different junctures for students as they need them? So I think what I'm most excited for as we look ahead is that we have a team now in front of us who is really eager to do this deep dive and use the research and look at our curriculum holistically.
Thank you. Michael, your opinion on the academic challenge?
Yeah, so a lot of this has already been said, but I'll highlight the points that I think are crucial. So the the first is is clearly literacy, reading, writing and and writing. In particular, I think starting in elementary school needs much greater focus through middle school and high school. I think that's undoubtedly an issue and and I know it's one that Dr. Moore is is focused on. Consistency is also an issue. I know it's an issue across elementary schools, but it's also an issue in high school where students taking the same class with different teachers can have very, very different experiences, which is something we need to 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 focus on. Third thing is 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 challenge and making sure that we are providing students with the rigor and with the challenge that they can handle, that we're helping our students really achieve as much as they possibly can for those who 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 want to be pushed. And and that does go to what Ariana just spoke of making it so it's not a eighth grade decision for math, for example, of which path you're on and giving people the chance to catch up and to get back on a a different track. Right now it is very siloed. And you make that decision, it's hard to transfer from one to the other. And the third one is the issue around electives. I think no, no, there used to be two electives. Now there's one in the high school. And a lot of those electives are four-year tracks. So if you decide to go in Okra, for example, your freshman year, that's what you're doing. But what if you want to try one of the STEM classes? What if that's an interest that comes to you sophomore, junior year? At this stage, there's very little opportunity for you to really go and explore that interest other than going into extracurriculars or outside of the school. And it's really, I think, limiting to 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 our kids. And I think it's something we should be looking at.
Thank you. We had talked before we started about taking a break at the eight o'clock mark, and it's almost there. And rather than ask the next few questions, I propose that we take a break. Is five minutes okay for everybody? Okay. Mitchell, are you on?
Yes, I am, Michael.
Did you notice that Sally's video froze from time to time?
Yes, yes, very poor. It's it's probably her streaming service at our home.
Okay. I mean, we can certainly hear her answer. That's not a problem.
Yeah, well, we got lucky with that, though.
Yeah, visually. It's noticeable, but there's nothing we can do, right?
No, we're we know we're limited to what we can. I mean, the only thing is that she at some point, you know, should upgrade a little bit, but obviously we can't, you know, discuss that.
You think I should call attention to it?
Well, maybe at the end, you might want to say it froze and, you know, would be, you know, trying to upgrade the system a little bit.
Well, no, I don't want to, I I mean, to the viewer, just call attention to the fact that there seems to be a little quirk in the.
I I don't know if it's necessary. I think the viewers by now kind of, you know, can understand the idea with streaming and it's not perfect, so. As long as you can hear, you're fine. If it frozen and we didn't get any audio, then that would be a different story.
Yeah.
We would have lost her altogether, but we're, I think.
There are two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight questions left. We're not even halfway done.
Okay.
We're going to run long.
Well.
They unless they I mean, they're giving very thoughtful answers.
Yeah, those are wonderful, yeah.
Yeah. I don't want to.
We have, we have plenty of tape, as they say, so we can run as long as you'd like.
Okay.
So not a problem.
Where are you recording this, by the way?
Well, it's going into the LMC streaming service, which is, you know, in the cloud, and they have a copy of it. Yeah.
So are you home or in an office?
Oh, I'm home.
Oh, okay.
I'm on my Mac computer taking it all in. And I have a copy that I can record also on my own system here as a backup. So we're we're in pretty good shape either way.
Do you have any idea at this point about when it will air?
I don't. I would think that, you know, they're going to try to edit this and put the flow of Thursday pyrons on as soon as they can. I would think in maybe two days, but I'm not, I'm not privy to that information, but I think it's timely, you know, and it won't take that long to.
I was going to say at the end that for repeating on cable TV, they can they can check our website for for the schedule and that they could also watch it anytime on their computer tablet or your smartphone.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It'll be up on our website, you know, forever. So it's good. They can catch it at any time.
Mike, you used to work at the PACE program, right?
Yes, I was one of the founders of PACE. Yeah, way back when. Nineteen, let's see, it was seventy-five, I believe.
Oh, wow.
Was a it was a spring elective. And we we divided the students into three groups. We did a children's play called A Reluctant Dragon. And we had roughly a third of the class acted in parts. A third of them did the scenery and the sets, and a third of them did the tech. And after we had performed it about four or five times for elementary school kids, we were in the process of re-blocking it so that we could videotape it. And the dragon fell apart.
Oh, no.
Yeah, the head fell apart. And unfortunately, it was like there were two more days of school and we just we just ran out of time and everybody was disappointed, but it proved that that it could work.
Nice. Excellent.
And eventually, video, we we had to drop video out of pace because the enrollment for TV went way up. And we added music and so but now for years and years, it's been theater and dance and music, and it's been very successful.
Yeah, I think it was still video when I was there. I graduated in ninety-one, so I think it was.
That that could have been. Yep. Yep. Thank you all for coming back. A little worried, we might lose some people. This is you've you've made a great time commitment, so thank you for that. Our next, are you recording now, Mitch?
Yes, we're live. We're good.
Okay. Our next question to Board of Education candidates has to do with diversity. And I'm going to ask Elizabeth if you'll answer first. The question is this, in a previous election year, board candidates were asked how they would address issues of diversity, equity and inclusion with respect to both academic achievement and ensuring that all students are comfortable in our schools. In your opinion, what progress specifically has been made and what, if anything, remains to be addressed?
Well, I would begin by speaking about the work of the District Equity Task Force, which I I think has made great strides toward creating opportunities for students to discuss these very important, these crucial issues, both within the school district and with their caregivers and with stakeholders in our community through a variety of school programs and and parent events. But I think there is certainly still more work to be done. And we do have a number of community partners who stand ready to really support us in these activities. I've mentioned the Community Resource Center before, and I do know that that is an organization that has has the the tools that we need and the understanding of their clients to really help support our district, support our social workers and our guidance counselors as we confront, you know, the changing landscape of Mamaroneck, which is something that we really ought to celebrate. I believe it's something we do celebrate, but there's much more we can do. And I feel, as I've said before, that it is access to all of our our opportunities that really shows the extent to which we are paying attention to questions of diversity and inclusion and whether we're really meaning it with with our our actions as well as with our words. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Catwell, can you answer that same question on diversity?
Yes, of course I can. So thank you very much for that. You know, they we have the the diversity, you know, we have a the diversity, the equity plan that has been in existence for about the last five years. I think that it has worked on some significant areas within our district in order to ensure that there is further belonging and understanding and mutual appreciation for each other. In my preference would be to start to extend that into further groups that I think also need to be heard and heard and, you know, included in the world of diversity and inclusion, which is to me the world of special education, maybe, you know, more of the LGBTQ. You know, I I know that we have a director who is spending a lot of time with parents and students in these different forums, but I think actually putting some more direct work in those particular, those particular areas, I think would also be, people would certainly appreciate that within our district.
Thank you. Ariana, can you answer that question on diversity, please?
Yeah, I think it's work that we as a district have been committed to for a long time, but I think have fortunately continued to do better and been committed to doing better. I think some of the areas I'm proudest of is the board's commitment to reaching out to groups that were identified through our Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of Equity or DIB and starting to build those relationships ourselves. Many of us have also attended all of the evening opportunities, which really, I think, is the other critical piece. I think what we know is that this work is happening in earnest in our buildings, led by our teachers and our administrators, and that the sort of collaborative piece is we bring in families and help them to have these important conversations and understand how these have these important conversations is where the work still remains. And so I think that is what's sort of this this next chapter for us is how do we continue to evolve this work beyond our school walls and out in our community?
Thank you. Michael, the same question about diversity, progress and what remains to be addressed?
Sure. So so clearly, much credit to the administration and the board for the progress that has been made over the last few years with the Equity Plan, with the new administrator and the focus on the topic. I think the success and the progress is is really palatable and 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 clear. And clearly, there's more more work to do. The the aspect of the topic that I'd like to touch on maybe a little more is the in inclusion aspect of it and specifically the high school, because it's one of the things I've I've been noticed, especially in addition to Ms. Barnard at the high school, the the level of school spirit, the level of engagement from students is 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 really high, but it's not as broad, it's not as deep as it as it could be. And I think that's one of the great opportunities we have is to take all the things that make our high school so special, both that school spirit, which I do think is 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 pretty unique, as well as the breadth of programs, extracurricular and otherwise, and make sure that it's actually being accessed by by all of our students. And I think that's something that needs significantly more proactive outreach from community members, administrators, teachers and other students. And I think that can have a really meaningful impact on the experience of of all of our students. We can bring more into the fold to accessing all the opportunities that that exist to the high school. I think it's a it's a really meaningful step that we could take to further improve the experience of of all the students in our district.
Thank you. Andrean, the same question on diversity?
Thank you. I bring a very personal perspective to that question, Mike. I first got connected to the district through volunteering on the the District Equity Team. And I felt that it was a very important issue to be considered in the community. And I've spent the last three years of the boards serving as a liaison to that task force to make sure we continue to do the hard work. I first want to commend the district on taking multiple steps. What we've done an equity audit, we've we've implemented a lot of the recommendations that were made by the auditor. We have been providing professional development for teachers so that they know how to to interrupt a moment where where a student is using harmful language, either in the classroom or just on district property period. We've also been expanding that professional development to parents so that they understand how to have those difficult conversations at home. And I think the next level of work is to bring that to our students as a whole so that it's not just in one-by-one or three-by-three conversations. We're also able to bring the the group together as a school or as a grade and talk about what that means. I think it's very important to empower students to become informed, to understand the human connection and that belonging, I think, is one of the most integral steps needed for students and our staff to achieve their fullest potential. I think a lot of work remains, and I'm eager to participate in the dialogue and the initiatives moving forward to to bring that to fruition. I would just want to share that I recognize that a lot of families personally are undergoing difficult times, especially at homics sometimes. I know that's happened with my own son, who's been the subject of harmful language around his race. But I feel like the 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 school has been a good partner in trying to address that. And I'd like to see more done at a system-wide level rather than just on an individual basis. And I'm look forward to bringing my personal experiences to bear moving forward.
Thank you. The next question has to do with the arts programs. And Sally, if you would answer first. The question is, every few years, the students and parents of this community have been called on to make sure our art program isn't fractured. How will you work to promote the arts programs throughout our schools at all levels? Sally?
Yes, no, I apologize. I understand that my my screen my screen is freezing. So I apologize.
Hear you. We can hear you just fine.
Okay, perfect. So the arts is, you know, one of the gems within our district, the PACE program, certainly at the high school, has always been well-renowned. The music program throughout, you know, the elementary school and the middle school, again, is is second to none. I think that, you know, the parents do get involved in many of our special, you know, situations such as performing arts and also sports. So this is another way to get involved. I think what's happened over the the course of time is that, you know, the number of electives of going from homics to the high school has been limited and therefore maybe, you know, the performing arts have not been looked at as an additional elective that you could undertake. as an additional elective that you could undertake, um, as a, you know, rather than being told they can do one and not maybe two or three by taking in pace. I think the enrollment we've seen over time has decreased. It would be nice if we could encourage students to be involved in the arts in an earlier stage. When we go to, um, the elementary schools, you know, you, you have your entry at either, was it third or fourth grade? After that, there is no entry, you know, unless, you, so if you come into the district later or decide you want to be involved, you, there's very little options for them, uh, them and especially, you know, if they can go to Homic and be involved in choir. But, you know, again, it's like, how do we introduce or get more students involved at a later stage? You know, we are, uh, Pace is very special. I think it's also goes to the fact that something Mike said earlier about having a four-year program. Maybe, you know, reducing that to, you know, selectives where it's two years so that students can involve, get involved in Pace at different levels and not for the four-year commitment.
Thank you. Ariana, can you take that question on arts programs?
The funny thing, because I hear it every so often, it bubbles up that there's a concern over the loss of, and I never really know where it comes from, because I do, in my six-year serving on the board, I don't think there's ever sort of been a danger or a desire to cut anything arts-related. I don't know that there ever will be. Um, I do think that if I had to guess, I think some of it comes from the concern of down enrollment. Um, and I think that that really goes back to this idea, which is why I think it's super helpful that we did this scheduling study of understanding what students want to be taking and if they would like to be taking an art and an academic elective and using both sides of their brain. And what's happened is when you have to choose, something gives. And so understanding how we're utilizing our building and understanding that if we offer something sixth period versus third period, what that could look like, um, which is sort of the work that we're just unpacking now, I think will be sort of, um, the answer to really not only maintaining, because I think that for, I, for myself as a given, but I think going beyond that really helping to help it continue to flourish as a program, um, and because I think this is a district that is very proud of its arts program. And so I think we, this is how we can better support it.
Thank you. Michael, the same question about arts programs?
Yeah, so probably reiterating some things that have already been said, but, but clearly Pace is a crown jewel of our, of our district. Um, arts is an incredibly important, uh, aspect of any, uh, well-rounded education. And so, uh, we should not be in any way, shape or form. And, uh, I, I, I don't believe we are looking at cutting funding for that, but what we should be doing is trying to figure out how to increase enrollment, which, which does come down to choice and more opportunity for people to join in, uh, in addition to doing the, the other things they do. But I would just note, and I'll, I'll beat a dead horse a little bit, this comes down to, uh, all of these things require money and we're going to have to figure out how we prioritize and how we find the dollars by increasing the level of efficiencies in our budget without, um, asking our taxpayers to, uh, go even further than they already do. And it's, uh, going to be a very challenging exercise to, um, invest in all of these different programs in a resource-constrained world. But undoubtedly, the arts is a, is a crucial part of, uh, our district of any student's education and we should continue to, uh, to invest in it.
Thank you. Um, Andreen, can you answer that question about arts programs now, please?
Sure. I can't say enough about how much I love the Pace program. I think it's terrific and I always enjoy it. I hope my son gets to participate in it when he's a bit older. Um, what I would say is I think that it does boil down to choice, as mentioned by Ariana, I think the decline in enrollment in the Pace program really has to do with students having to make a choice between electives. And once we remove that barrier, I think we will see enrollment increase. And I think we should look at different ways to encourage our students to participate in this. And I think we should also be connecting it to career pathways as well, which I think is super important within our district. How do we make connections between our students who are artists and potential careers down the road? What type of, um, introductions can we make to them to a college program or to local community, local community organizations that might give them an awareness off a career pathway that that might, might, might not have considered, um, initially? I personally, I, I was not involved in the arts growing up. I wish I was more artistic, but I became a lawyer because I was connected to our law team in high school. And it was just that one choice, right? That one introduction to something that I was not aware of, didn't recognize that I could be a lawyer until that opportunity presented itself. And I'd love to see more of that for our Pace students and just students across the district in general.
Thank you. Um, Betsy, can you, um, opine on the arts programs?
Um, I, I'm curious to know whether the questioner meant visual or performing arts. And so I'll try to speak a little bit about both. I very much agree with, uh, some of my fellow panelists that, um, the arts should not be a matter of specialization. It shouldn't be that you have to, um, you have to pursue AP studio art in order to consider yourself, for example, a high school artist. We have such a wonderful grounding in visual arts. And of course, in music performance at elementary school, there should be opportunities to be an amateur, to be a beginner throughout one's experience in the school district. I think that, um, that then doesn't preclude those students who don't have access to outside instruction or specialized camps or whatever it might be. As far as the Pace program goes, I've spoken with a number of very committed Pace parents, as they prefer to be called. And they'll tell you that, um, the down enrollment is a self-fulfilling prophecy and it is a result particularly of this, uh, the, um, need for students to specialize and choose one elective path at the beginning of their high school career. So that Pace in and of itself is not, no, not any less popular. It's simply that students, uh, in some cases are pre-professionalizing and trying to think about which, uh, elective path will best suit their career plans or their college plans. Uh, I've heard from, from parents that Pace, the Pace program literally saves lives. It is an opportunity for, um, for students who may not feel particularly welcome in our sports programs or in other more traditional tracks to find their peers, find their safe space and find their community. So it absolutely advocate for us to continue the funding that we've committed to it and to commit more to the extent that we're possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ariana, if you would answer this question, the next one is about outcomes. And it is this, what can be done to ensure that all students are prepared for post-graduation? This includes college-bound and those who need a vocational pathway?
I think that this is where the work lies for us. I think that we have always, we have a deep history of a lot of opportunities that not everyone knows how to access. And as I spoke about earlier, um, on-ramps at different junctures. I think the other area that we really could see growth is, um, for our kids who want to go on to a career after graduation versus college. I think we have allotted slots for that through BOCs, but that there are real opportunities within our schools, within our culinary lab, within our, um, steam lab to really start to think about pathways where our students could, you know, one child maybe go straight into computer science into the field and another may take that into college and beyond. And with the facilities, the incredible facilities that we already have, I think we have real opportunities to start to think about where there can be on-ramps, where we can develop areas of interest. And I think that that will inevitably create much more opportunity and much more equitable opportunity. And I think one of the reasons that this board was so drawn to our current superintendent is because he had a very impressive, um, experience doing the, just that in his high school district that he came from and we were able to go see that, um, live. And so I look forward to seeing all the places we can take that here in Mamaroneck.
Thank you. Michael, the same question about outcomes?
Yeah, I think it's a great question and a really important one. I think, uh, it's imperative that the district is able to support all of our students for their future hopes and dreams, whatever those may be, uh, whether that's college or, or, or trade or, or whatever, uh, pathway they, they, they want to go down. And I think BOCs is an interesting one where I know we have fifteen spots for BOCs, but we're not a member of the BOCs program, uh, like many other districts are. And perhaps that's something that we can explore in terms of opening that up. I know the BOCs program is really successful in terms of helping people learn different skills and different trades and preparing them for a transition directly to the workforce, uh, after school. Um, so, um, I think it's a place where we need to focus. I think it's a place where we need to invest resources. And I think it's, um, you know, I think it's absolutely crucial in our mission to make sure that we are preparing kids who are looking to go to highly selective colleges and we're looking to prepare kids who are looking to go directly in the workforce and that the district is really providing that range of students with, with what they need to achieve their hopes and dreams.
Thank you. Andreen, same question, outcomes?
Thanks, Mike. I think it's absolutely necessary as we talk about outcomes to talk about data and how we are identifying what we expect the outcomes to be in advance and then sort of measuring how we are doing against that benchmark, learning, refining and moving forward. I'm very excited that we have Dr. Sampson on board who was focused on that type of data analysis and systems planning and I think will help us to get there. Um, I think your question falls very neatly within two of the priorities that I'm focusing on. One partnerships and one opportunities. Uh, we want to broaden the pipeline for students and introduce them to different things that they did not have access to before. And we also want to look at our partnerships with local colleges, with, um, local businesses so that we can start thinking about internships. We can start talking about different college courses that students can take from the high school. So by the time they get to college, they have college credit in advance. Or we all might be talking about how we get our students prepared to become nurses or, um, electricians. These are the different types of pipeline initiatives that I think we are well-placed to consider moving forward. And I look forward to partnering with Dr. Sampson and Dr. Moore, looking ahead to see how we connect those students to those types of opportunities.
Thank you. Um, Betsy, question about outcomes?
Can you repeat the entire question, please, Mike?
Um, what can be done to ensure that all students are prepared for post-graduation, including the college-bound and those who need a vocational pathway?
So, um, I'd like to draw on my experience as a member of the Board of the Student Aid Fund to say that I, I very much agree with my fellow panelists who have mentioned the benefit of the BOCs program. And I would encourage Mamaroneck to consider, um, being a full partner with BOCs because we have certainly seen that so many of the students who are seeking post-college oppor- excuse me, post-high school opportunity are looking to vocational and training programs, are looking to community colleges. And as a district, I think our focus has often been on really, um, elevating those stories of academic success when there are in fact so many different forms that success could take for our students. And some of what we need to do in addition to providing robust college and career counseling is really also to help our caregivers and our stakeholders understand what those opportunities are for their students after they graduate and certainly throughout their academic career. And that could take the form of a personalized learning plan that will help, uh, identify those potential, um, dead ends. As was mentioned before, the one singular opportunity to begin, uh, an honors math program or for example, other postgraduate opportunities that, uh, a family may simply not be aware of.
Thank you. Um, Sally, can you answer that question about outcomes, please?
Of course. I think the work has started. I know we saw this with, um, Dr. Shapps and, you know, we, I hear, have been starting the conversation with Dr. Sampson since he's arrived, but we have a long way to go. I think traditionally, our district has celebrated the, you know, the traditional college route, um, not so much the, um, community college route. And, you know, we, as we, we've talked about, we have BOCs program that isn't, is covering very few of our students that would prefer to, um, be in a more vocational environment. We do have students that, you know, are starting to go to, um, you know, trade school, whether that's welding, whether that's auto mechanic. But I think the one things that we don't do is necessarily celebrate everybody's achievements. I think it's based on the achievements of where they're going to college. And I think if you have a chart, opportunity and you look at the high school pay, there's a Instagram page for the high school students that they put up where they're going. And it's such an array of everything and it's wonderful to see that, um, as opposed to, you know, but that message goes back to communicating that with the, the parents, um, so that they can see that. But I had previously mentioned that I think it all starts with the Homic, the pathways, the through, through lines. It's just making sure that students are doing what they really want to do and what they love and giving them the opportunity, but knowing what those pathways are at an early age than perhaps we are now. Thank you.
The next question is about the superintendent, Dr. Sampson. And, uh, Michael, you get, uh, to answer first, if you please. What criteria would you use to evaluate the performance of the superintendent?
Uh, that's a great question and I think it comes down to the strategic framework that's putting in place. I think that's where our answers will lie. Um, I think that is a great, um, process that will, uh, make very clear what our goals and objectives are. Um, and then, uh, I think Dr. Moore actually spoke about this at length when he presented the framework, right? It's, it's what are your goals? How are you going to measure success? And then how do we check in and how do we adjust over time? It's not a strategic plan, it's a framework because it has that dynamicism and that ability to, uh, to pivot. And so I think the answers will come from that plan. I think the board working together with the administration will use that strategic framework uh, to agree upon the set of metrics, uh, that we're seeking to achieve from the, uh, initiatives that we undertake. Uh, and then I think it simply will flow that that's how the superintendent will be measured based upon the ability to achieve those metrics, um, over time. So, uh, I think, uh, it all comes down to, oh, working from planning, uh, or, or framework, uh, setting goals, measuring those goals and then making your determination on performance based upon that.
Thank you. Um, Andreen, would you answer the question about the superintendent?
Sure. One of the reasons that I emphasize transparency is because I feel like it really leads to or requires data-driven decisions that anticipate what your expected outcomes are. I think I shared that, uh, a few questions back. It's about taking a look at a system approach and figuring out how are we getting towards the end goal? And I think it starts with a mission and vision first and foremost. So looking at developing an updated mission or vision that aligns with the community priorities based on feedback from our students, from our teachers, from our staff and from our parents. And once we've done that, making sure that the strategic framework aligns to that. And I think at every step of the way, we need to be collecting data. And that doesn't mean that it has to be like a, a hard quantitative number. It can be about measuring how are students feeling? Are they feeling safe and connected and engaged? Do they feel like they belong? Are our teachers feeling prepared, like they have the resources that they need to be ready to, um, promote student success in the classroom? Are we looking at graduation rates? Are we looking at how our students are participating in electives or sports or after-school activities? These are all things that we can measure and assess to figure out if we are actually moving in the right direction. And it's not about coming to a specific endpoint, but continually looking at how we learn, how we refine and how we grow. And I think if we do that, then our community will be, um, will be happy with the results that they see. And I'm very excited that we chose Dr. Sampson for that specific reason, because when we visited his district, we saw a lot of this work in progress. He was looking at not just making a decision just because it needed to be made, but understanding the outcomes in advance, understanding the implications of the choice and making sure you had the resources and the systems in place so that the program could be successful. And he could view that in the beginning and then measure against it on an ongoing basis. And I'm excited to see more of that work here in the district.
Thank you. Uh, Betsy, your turn. The, um, criteria for evaluating the superintendent?
Yes, um, I'm also very excited about the experience that Dr. Sampson brings to this position. I think he is, uh, seems to be the right person for us at this particular moment in our history. But I, I also agree that there, um, the criteria for measuring his success will be a combination of, of metrics, but also soft skills, because I do, uh, hope that we will see him and be able to measure his, um, his skills as, um, as a collaborator with, with student groups, with stakeholder groups, his ability to work among administrations, to bridge gaps between, um, between schools, between teachers and between programs. This is a big and complicated district and it has been marked by some, um, you know, some town gown challenges in the past and also by some challenges, um, in between our different schools with their different needs and constituencies. And I would really look, in addition to understanding how we can measure him against his framework, I would be very much looking to see how he can bring some, some internal harmony to our district.
Thank you. And, um, Sally, can you answer that question about judging the, um, performance or evaluating the performance, I should say, of the superintendent?
Of course, we do this on a, on a formal basis, um, with the superintendent. We do, and in, you know, we establish our goals. We give, you know, the superintendent what the school board would like to achieve. Um, and from those, he then decide, you know, he will then as being the, the person that runs the ship would come back with, again, as we talked about the, um, the, you know, the strategic framework of what he thinks should be the priorities based on our, what the priorities that we have given that, given to him, whether that's student achievement, whether it is engagement, belonging, whether it's curricular through lines, et cetera. So, you know, he's very clear, I think, going into this, what his expectations are. And as a board, we have outlined, there are six areas, clearly to me, the most important would be making sure that the students feel the Clearly, to me, the most important would be making sure that the students feel the belong, you know, that they belong, that we improve the culture that we have, that they feel that they belong, that we're creating a, you know, more, you know, collaborative environment, um in engagement with our students, um our board, our staff, our community members, our t- our um parents. Um, and then, you know, going on to everything that he is financially responsible for, for him to be able to share with, with um all the, you know, the community, be able to um communicate the, what the cost of all these programs and how, you know, the budget is put together and how the money's been spent in the right way in order to ensure that all students achieve what they need to achieve.
Thank you. Ariana, would you answer that question about evaluating Dr. Sampson?
So I think we had a unique opportunity this past year in getting to hire Dr. Sampson in that the search firm um that we worked with did a tremendous number of community interviews to inform them, who then informed us about how the community would like us to be looking for the superintendent and then sort of inherently nested within that, evaluating his success or her success once they arrived. So I think sort of in the back of all of our minds who were a part of that process, I would say it became very clear that it was important that we hire someone who connected with our faculty, connected with our um, our parents and our students and was a presence and was a listener and was really engaged and a part of our community. So I think that's sort of one area that was a clear priority that I think we've already begun to see Dr. Sampson wholeheartedly lean into. So that would be sort of one bucket. And then I think the other sort of really loud bucket was this idea of systems and this idea around clarity, around what one can expect, and that every student could expect a similar experience in terms of what they um could expect, in terms of what they'll come out of here with. And so while we want every child to find their own path, that we have a leader who is really thoughtful and deliberate about making decisions that have been pre-thought through and then rolled out with efficacy. Um, so I think that's another area that we look forward um to evaluating Dr. Sampson on.
Thank you. Uh, the next question is about technology, and it goes first to Andrean. The question is this, what role should the district play in protecting our children from the negative aspects of modern technology?
I think technology brings both benefits as well as negatives. So I'd say that moving forward, preparing for the, the world of artificial intelligence, I think it's very crucial that our students are prepared, they understand how to use the resources, and they understand how to do so responsibly. I don't think our role is to eliminate it from, from the district or from the curriculum because of potential negative implications. We are at our heart educators, right? We are preparing our students to be ready to be responsible adults in a multicultural world, if we go back to our mission and vision. And I think that means teaching them, preparing them, exposing them, and making sure we're there to provide the necessary guidance and support that they need. Uh, so that means practicing it. We just this year updated our policies to include one on artificial intelligence, because it's not about preventing our students from accessing resources that would actually help them prepare for new careers, careers we're not even thinking about right now, but just making sure they understand the guidelines and the guideposts in order to do so responsibly. So I'd love to see that interwoven in our curriculum so that they're being introduced to it, so that they're learning how to do it responsibly. And and ultimately, I think it will be an asset for them moving forward. We don't want our students to be leaving our district behind or unprepared. And I think it's necessary to, to look at how we use technology, not just from the student's side, but also from the staff's side. How can it improve the way that we govern? How can it improve the way that we teach? What resources will be available for us or what efficiencies can we have? Because we are relying on technology to help guide us. Those gaps that I spoke about earlier, how can technology play a role in identifying when those start? So we can understand the cause and then help to close them.
Okay, Betsy, uh, again, the question, what role should the district play in protecting our children from negative aspects of modern technology?
I would say that um the pandemic certainly brought technology into every aspect of our district's work in, in a enormous way. And after the pandemic, what I'm hearing from parents is that uh they really need a vision from the district for tech use in the classroom and um and in homework and other settings post-pandemic. They feel like there's an assumption being made that our students, because they're digital natives, don't need the assistance or the guidance of their um of faculty or of other administrators to interpret what they're seeing online. Um, it really is, I believe, our responsibility to pr- provide guidelines, to help them use the tools at their disposal. Uh, we're living in a time of disinformation when, you know, the internet is not a substitute for the library. There are ways, I think, to safely and responsibly incorporate technology into every aspect of our learning. And I do agree uh with Andrean that they provide, you know, great opportunities for um, for developing equity across our systems. But at the same time, I think we need to have a plan and articulate it to our community.
Thank you. Uh, Sally Cantwell, can you answer that same question about protecting children?
Um, I think this comes in partnership with the parents. Um, I think there's only a certain amount that the school district can actually do with as it relates to the different apps and and what the kids are doing. I mean, recently, there was a study that said that um, you know, or school districts, where they actually took the high school phones away. And there was a lot of script, you know, people that were very uncomfortable with that. But they actually found that the um, they found that the education of the kids actually increased. And I think one thing that I have heard from teachers themselves is very hard to monitor this. So if a child will come into the classroom with a phone, you know, they can't take it away from them. They can only request it from them, and I think that puts them in a difficult position. Um, I think if you look at the world of AI, it's the future. And it's in our colleges that the question is, how do we encourage the students to use it? To what, and how do we make sure that whenever they use it, they cite it? And they don't use it for seventy percent of their work. They actually use it for the right, you know, the right way, as opposed to something where they can use it in, in an incorrect way. So I think to answer the question, I think we can protect, but I think we also need our parents to assist us in that particular direction.
Thank you. Ariana, question about protecting our children from modern technology?
I think um what I continue to hear is that there's a desire for balance. I think that there um is a desire to not completely sort of baby at the bathwater, uh get a, get rid of all textbooks and move to an entirely digital academic world. So figuring out how we still bring in the value of books, right? And and sort of having those traditional texts that everyone can refer back to, while also, I agree with so, so much of what's been said, understanding that there's huge value in the technology and also understanding that all the testing that our kids are required to participate in occurs on technology. So we can't run away from it, we've got to teach into it, while also finding balance and being really deliberate about teaching about the sort of strengths and the challenges. And I think, you know, we added a digital citizenship component um at Homics for this year. I think it's something we'll continue to look at. How do we early and often continue to talk about the challenges? But also, I think equally important to stigmatize it and say like, we're gonna sort of leave it out there is, would not be doing our students justice either. So I think, and I know Dr. Sampson has spoken about this and spoke about it at the summit as well, helping our faculty get comfortable with the what, what parts are here to stay and how it's helpful to them, and then helping our students navigate it in tandem with our faculty.
Thank you. Uh, Michael, how would you answer that question?
Yeah, so I, I think a- all the points that have been made are, are, are really important and 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 well said. It may be looking at it from a slightly different angle. You know, I think the heart of the question is to have, what is the role of the district to protect students from the negatives uh of, of technology? And interestingly, I, I, I think I connect that um answer through the lens of life skills to your question about civics that we started off with, but even to things like financial literacy. And I do think that it is incumbent upon the district, as we think about preparing our children for the next phase of their lives, to instruct on civics, to instruct on financial literacy, but to also instruct about the dangers of what can happen online and in, in, in the internet and how you deal with things like cyberbullying and how you deal with the dangers of the algorithms that are, you know, trying to feed you things that keeps you online. That documentary that came out a few years ago is frightening, right? There, there's um, I, I do think that is something that we can intertwine in the curriculum, age-appropriate from elementary through high school, in educating students on uh the dangers of uh technology, the dangers of social media, and things they can do to um protect themselves and 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 to um, you know, make the most of what can be a very powerful but also a very dangerous tool. So um, I think it is incumbent upon the district to have that as part of what we offer to our students.
Okay. Next question, uh, we'll first go to Betsy, and that is about curriculum. And it is this question, what are your thoughts on the current curriculum in our schools? And what, if any, changes would you encourage?
Um, as an educator who's well-versed in our state standards, I have to say I'm, I'm very glad that we are a New York State school, because it is a um, a system that is focusing on teaching our whole history and on inclusive curricula that really speak to the breadth of understanding um of both of our state and um of the, the state of, of academia as we know it today. And so I'm, I'm glad, because I think there are fewer constraints on us than there may be in other parts of the country. Um, I do feel that our curriculum has tended to uh, to privilege ELA and math instruction. And I have, I have no objection to that, but I do think that um in a time when the sciences are so important to our understanding of the world, we spoke earlier about climate change, um but also when we think about the, the age of the pandemic that we're living through, we have an obligation to teach the hard sciences um at an earlier age than we do now. I think there is plenty of excellent science instruction in the high school for those who seek it out. But there's an opportunity to be turned off by um, by limited science instruction before you reach that point. I feel that way, just in, in, in closing, about a number of, of opportunities that are available to our students, that we need to really engage our, our youth at the middle school or, or late elementary level so that they will seize upon these subjects and not simply see them as um the course they have to get out of the way.
Thank you. Uh, Sally, your thoughts about the curriculum?
I um, I think we've got to the stage where we do need to update our curriculum. I think it's the perfect time to have a new assistant superintendent come in and review it, along with the new director positions that we've integrated. Because I think one of the things that I think we have seen over the past three years is that we needed to make sure that it was consistent and it was thorough. And it, you know, where the gaps were, they, where the gaps are that they are corrected and updated. So I think there's a lot of work that we need to do with our curriculum um from an updating and a refreshing and a review perspective. You know, an example I would put out there is the languages, you know, we are, if you look at our neighboring um school districts, there are, they are offering more languages. I would just like to, you know, increase some, you know, I'd like to introduce something like American Sign Language or um language for, you know, conversation as opposed to the traditional, so that you can look at the curriculum in, in a different way. They're saying, does it benefit all the students? And is it enabling them to get what they need for themselves to be successful in, in their lives?
Thank you. Uh, Ariana, the same question about curriculum.
So I think we have a lot to celebrate, and I think we have work to do. I think um there are amazing bright spots in our curriculum. I think where we struggle is the curricular consistency. I think that um different students have different experiences as it relates to um their reading and writing curriculum, for example, because we have historically sort of had a bit of a, you know, we've added foundations and then we've added, you know, and just we've now added, you know, a math program. So at different moments, we've pulled, we've added, we've pulled back. Um, and so I think what we have to be thoughtful about going forward is um deciding why we're going to move forward or not with what we've got, and then really staying the course so that we can measure its success. And, you know, going back to this idea of data and if it's, and its efficacy. So I think that's sort of where the work needs to be with curriculum. That, and then I would say also um increased opportunities as it relates to a- at the ho- at the level of the homics. Because I think the idea that, you know, we did add now science in, you know, which I agree was sort of a long time coming into the elementary grades, and that was sort of a great add over the last two budgets. But I think now, how do we build on that? How do we at Homics start to say like, what are your pathways? What are your areas of interest? How do we go deeper? Because I think that that also, through curriculum, we will connect children to each other and to meaningful content. And so that's where I see the need for curriculum to head.
Thank you. Uh, Michael, the same question about curriculum. Your thoughts?
Yeah, so I, I think we touched upon this earlier, but I'll uh, I'll, I'll reiterate, I guess, my key points on curriculum. Or one, consistency. Um, I think that's something that's been lacking. I think it's acknowledged that it's lacking, and I think Dr. Sampson, Dr. Moore uh are, are aware and, and will address it, but consistency is crucial. Secondly, I think there's, uh Sally mentioned it, I think there's ample opportunity to increase the breadth uh of, of programming that we offer. And thirdly, I think there's a, a chance to increase the rigor uh of, of what we offer and to make sure that we are uh challenging our students and, and, and meeting the needs. Um, so that students who, who, who do seek uh uh more challenge aren't forced to outside the school district, because that only increases inequality, because those who can afford it do go outside and those who can't don't. And uh, so I think making sure that we're uh appropriately challenging uh our students who can handle the challenge, increasing the breadth of programming and increasing, increasing consistency are the key things to focus on.
Thank you. Andrean?
Thanks, Mark. I agree a lot with uh, a lot with what my colleagues have said so far. They've already spoken about consistency in career pathways, so I won't lean into that area too much. I think we do need to take a look at our reading, writing and STEM curriculum, particularly at the elementary and the middle school levels. I would love to see us add language at the elementary level. Um, Dos Caminos is exceptional, but it is a very small, you know, cohort of students that get to participate in that program. And I'd love to see us introduce more kids to language at an even earlier stage. Um, I think we need to lean into enrichment opportunities and rigor as well, um particularly at Homics, trying to get things introduced to students earlier and also at the high school. And I think as we're thinking overall about curriculum, we need to keep equity at the forefront, making sure that we are teaching things from multiple perspectives and on understanding in advance what potential barriers might exist so that we can continue to open doors for all students across the district. I think this is a key area, and I would definitely love to continue serving on the curriculum committee if I am re-elected.
Thank you. Okay, next to the last question, here it is. Uh, and Sally, if you would take it first, infrastructure. What parts of our infrastructure need investment?
We have the most beautiful, splendid but very old buildings. So our next um, the, the um capital budget coming through for this year, twenty-eight million dollars. Majority of that, I would say twenty-six million of that is all based on putting, making sure the, the roofs don't leak, you know, the walls don't seep. And um, a- and that we're keeping it to the level that, you know, that we're keeping it up so that it still runs. Um, you know, over time, we are gonna have to, you know, we, we do have a building committee that I sit on, that I'm, I've been part of that committee. And, you know, we have different priorities. And I think currently, you know, we have focused on what do we need to do right now to make sure that our buildings are safe for students? Um, what, you know, and make sure that they can open the doors. But going forward, it's like, you know, potentially, how do we, how do we introduce the world as we get closer with global warming? How do we, you know, introduce air conditioning into, you know, homics, into the high school? But all of that, you know, takes significant amount of money and a civic amount of planning. So um, I think at the moment, where we stand with our capital bond, I think is the right amount. Would we like to do more? Yes, but it comes down to how much more would, how much more would our taxpayers be willing to spend on our beautiful old buildings?
Thank you. Ariana, would you answer that question about infrastructure? What needs investment?
So we do have a capital bond that's also gonna be on the ballot. And it's, as Sally said, it's really sort of a, how do we maintain our buildings? Um, that's sort of the mandate, right? We are fiscal stewards, and if the roofs fall in, we can educate our students. So that we stand behind, and the impact um per average household is eleven additional dollars per month. So we feel, and we are doing it right now because of rolling off of a prior bond. So the impact feels less dramatic than if we were to wait. Um, so that's the thinking behind that. I think the part two is being creative and continuing to look to outside partners to figure out how we best utilize the spaces we have. So last year, we did that. Um, we did a partnership with Fields for Kids, and they built the fantastic playground that now exists behind Homics. Because for those who don't know, we don't own the field behind Homics, so we don't often have access to it. So there really wasn't a consistent place to play for our students. So figuring out community partners, similarly, you know, we are trying to partner and, and turf town center so that that becomes a more usable space. So how do we continue to look at the spaces we have, community partnerships, and figure out how we better use? and figure out how we better utilize what we have or and rethink the spaces that we're already in better and more effectively?
Thank you. Michael, have you thought about infrastructure?
Yeah, so I think this is another one of the very serious fiscal challenges we face. I think if you look at, I think the five-year plan is a total of $150 million and 32 or whatever, 30 odd million is in this year's bond. But there's significant incremental investments that's going to be needed in the future for the upkeep of our schools. And, you know, the tax rates in this community are already very high. And so I think it's a, there's no easy answers. As Sally said, we have beautiful but very old buildings and they need upkeep. And so I'm highly supportive of the bond that's on the on the ballot. And I think our buildings are going to need continued investment. That is undoubtedly true, and it's something that the board and the administration are going to need to figure out how to, how to balance those with all the other needs in our district. It's part of what makes this a very challenging situation, even though it also is, as I've said, a very exciting time for us. The only other thing I'd say is Ariana mentioned, I just give great kudos to the Fields for Kids organization, which I think has done such great work behind HOMICS, their work on Town Center and what they're looking to do for Flint or for Alma. I mean, all these are huge, huge benefits for the community. And I think we're all very lucky to have that support.
Thank you. Andrean? What areas need investment?
Sure, thank you so much for the question, Mike. I think we need to be taking a look at how we enhance our facilities aligned with our program needs. I think we need to be thinking about the two things together. So if we're looking, for example, at HOMICS and the needs there, that's why we expanded the cafeteria at HOMICS. That's why we are adding cafeterias at two of the other elementary schools so that all four schools will have access to hot and healthy lunches. So I think that's the way we need to start thinking about this, tying it into the program needs. UPK, there continues to be great demand for it, and I think it's a very key part of early literacy, K through three. Where are we going to have that if there continue to be enrollment challenges across the district? We need to be thinking through those types of questions so that we can plan accordingly and strategically. How are we going to provide AC in our classrooms for students? We've been able to do that at the elementary level. But looking ahead, how can we do that in a way that is balanced? And that is consistent with our duties to be responsible stewards, to add that into our classrooms so our students are feeling they feel healthy in the classroom. And I would also give kudos to Field for Kids. I think they've done a terrific job, and the school board has worked in partnership with them over the last three years. And not just with them, but with the district leadership team as well to add outdoor classrooms where it was needed, to recognize the need for additional field space and to find partners, key partners that could help us with that. I think we need to continue to do that going forward. How can we partner with the Marinerick Schools Foundation or other partners to be responsible in how we try to enhance the district moving ahead? I do think is going to be an important aspect, especially at HOMICS moving forward.
Betsy, can you answer that same question, please, about areas of our infrastructure that need investment?
Yes, very much. And like the rest of this group, I heartily support the bond. I do feel that many families moved to this district from less well-resourced districts. And they are, they come to Larchmont Marinerick seeking a school board and an administration that will not tolerate deferred maintenance. And I think that is very much clear in the work we're doing with this bond as well as our plans for the future. But I do think that it would be important for us, as we consider our list of needs, to to put a few criteria front and center. One, of course, would be climate change, and we've spoken about this on this call, and the needs to to really understand those urgent potential crises that can erupt around climate change, particularly at our most low-level, low-lying, excuse me, facilities. And similarly, to really think in terms of equity when we are focused on our laundry list of capital, of capex needs. There are some needs that are greater than others across our districts. You know, some of our facilities are better situated than others, not just for for climate change. And I think it moves us to really look at our priority list through that lens. I agree that partnerships are a wonderful way to move forward. Fields for Kids is extraordinary. My daughter is a huge fan of the playground behind HOMICS. But I think that we shouldn't limit ourselves. There are state, federal funds available as well as private partnerships that we can pursue for PACE and for all the other opportunities that require significant capex.
Thank you. The League asked that I ask the last question now. And that is, what are the strengths of our school district? And we'll start with Ariana, please.
I think there are so many, it's hard, it's a tough one because I think we're all here because we come from a place of appreciating the strengths of our district. I think we all moved here for our school, in large part for our schools. I think that they're the cornerstone of our community. I think that they are where we all come together. And I think the fact that so many of us come from so many different places with so many different lived experiences and come and share learning together is such a gift. And I think that's why I have taken and will continue to take, you know, given the chance, the stewardship of this role of understanding that this is the place that we all come together and that all of the gifts we can provide through curriculum, through extracurriculars, which we didn't even actually fully get to touch on tonight, and the value that those provide and the opportunities that we as a district can offer to the children that come through our doors are the cornerstone of who we are. And I think we have a lot to be very proud of and a lot that I'm excited to do as we move forward.
Thank you very much. Michael, the strengths of the school district?
Yeah, I think the the first strength, which we cannot celebrate enough, is the strength of the teachers in this district. You know, I've had kids who've gone through three schools, and I know I'm not alone out there. And they've just had the most wonderful teachers throughout their years here at Marinerick. And I think that's the core of what makes our district so great. I think it's also a community that is really warm and welcoming. And I think that's evidence, we talked about earlier, Fields for Kids, Merrick Schools Foundation, Merrick Larchmont Student Aid Fund, all these organizations that really embrace our students and provide even more opportunities and more resources and more support for them that are also enthusiastically supported by our community. So I think I think we have a lot of strengths, a lot to be thankful for. And, you know, it's the reason I'm on this Zoom today. I think this is just such an amazing community. And I think we're all here because we'd love to try and do more to help make our schools even better.
Thank you. Andrean?
I think we have a lot of strengths across our district. And coming off of Teacher Appreciation Week, I would start with our teachers. I think they are amazing resources. They're engaged, they're passionate, they're dedicated. And I'd follow that up by giving a shout out to our students. I can't even begin to express the dedication and the creativity and the innovation that I've seen in our students. I've had the privilege of serving on the Board of Girls' League of Westchester for the last five years and was able to introduce that to the high school and to see that connectivity and the leadership and the focus within that core group of girls participating in the program, I think, is tremendous. I think the focus on sports here is so important. I view that as a huge success because it really helps to drive that sense of belonging and wellness, both physical and mental, that I think is super important. I think I'd also have to give recognition to the diversity across our district, which I think is a key point of celebration for us. And I'm looking forward to the bright future, our new superintendent that's focused on planning and database decisions and creating new career pathways. All of that makes me very excited about continuing to serve on the board for the next three years.
Thank you. Betsy, your thoughts about the strengths of the school district?
Well, as Mike mentioned, we're here because we believe this is a very strong school district that deserves all of our support to make it the best it can be, to continue to be the best it can be. This is a community that goes to sleep thinking about our school district and our schools and wakes up thinking about our schools. It is the preoccupation of every caregiver and many and most of our taxpayers as well. And I think that that really speaks to the coherence and the connectivity that we've seen throughout our schools, our four elementary schools, our one middle school, and of course, the high school. And to the ways in which we all work together to try and nurture all of our students, to meet them where they are with all of their challenges and to provide them with every possible opportunity. I think that's why there are three incumbents running again is because there's so much enthusiasm for what Dr. Sampson and Dr. Moore, you know, plan to accomplish and for what they represent. And they really represent, I think, the best of what we hope for, for our students, for our facilities and for the wonderful teachers and staff who nurture them.
Thank you. And Sally, the same question, the strengths of the school district?
I think we have the most wonderful school district. We came to America 24 years ago from London. And it is not traditional coming from London that you would move into a public school education. And it's like a private school gem that we have within, you know, in Marinerick. We have outstanding teachers that when you talk to them about, I had a situation with my son when he came and he could read. And they were like, yeah, he can read, but he doesn't understand what he's reading. And it was just sort of blew our mind away that that was something that within two weeks, they can pick this up and they can help educate your children. So I think at every level, you know, you go back to school night, and there's never a case where you walk away and go, wow. You know, this is terrible. It's like, wow, they were incredible, they understood what they had to teach. And so I think the strength of our teachers and how they just love to teach our students, you know, we're very blessed by that. I think, you know, we have, you know, the rigor of our educational programs, you know, are the things that we can improve. Yes, we've talked about those, but the actual overall, I think we're very lucky to have that and the depth of it. The strength of our student relationships, you know, when, you know, having had four children go through this pro, is through the school district, they have some of the strongest relationships. And they still all come back to their their time at Marinerick, whether that's in the elementaries, the middle school, the high school. And they stick to, you know, they stick together, they're there for each other, may not be there all the time, but when they needed, they're there. And then I think also finally, you know, we have got, you know, most outstanding extracurricular, whether that's PACE, whether that's sports, whether that's STEM. You know, we're just very lucky that the kids have the opportunity to do, you know, OAKRA, you know, things that they would never normally do in many different school districts, whether that's public or private. And I just hope that I can, you know, continue being able to serve on this board and continue to see our strength grow over the next three years.
Thank you. It has been a real pleasure to listen to your thoughtful and informative and articulate answers to these questions that were posed by the League of Women Voters. It's been my pleasure also to be the host of this program. And I'd like to thank the League and also thank LMC Media for recording it. For details about the proposed school budget, as well as another Q and A with board candidates, a shorter one, I may add, you can go to the school district's website, which is mamschools.org. And for the time that this program will be replayed on cable TV, you can check LMC Media's website. Or you can just go to the website and watch on your computer, your tablet or your smartphone anytime. Please remember to vote May 21st at your local elementary school. Thank you and goodbye.